I'm a sophomore this year.
Hi, I'm Riley Clark and I'm a freshman this year.
Hi, I am Leigh Ford and I am also a freshman here.
Well done, all of you. Well done.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
So I'm glad that worked out, even though it took till June, but it worked out.
It was worth the wait.
It was.
It's okay.
Definitely compliments, right?
We know all that.
And the last part of my report is the YES program is here this week. That's why the attire, because I'm just going around the school and there's things out in the field and there's things in the gym and there's things on the sunrise trail and everywhere. And so the next five days, the students will be engaged in that. And today, even though the weather, you know, it didn't help, it went well. It's going to be nice tomorrow and then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We're looking forward to that. And then it is the end of the year. So yeah, looking forward to that. And like I said, celebrating this class of 2022 because it really is a special class, a deep class. And yeah, they're really going to be missed.
Questions?
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Clifford, I had the pleasure of attending several events in the last week, including HCTC awards and senior night and class night, last night. And I was at the Mad Jester Awards where I saw some, all these young people here. And I have to say, the, the, this is an extraordinary class and the level, the achievements that some of them have done and the scholarships last night that were given out, there's, it was, it was just a testament to their hard work and their perseverance and their intelligence and their academic success. And I think our community should be very proud of these students. And I can't wait to see what they're going to be doing is down the road because I hope that, I know that.
For sure.
We'll be in touch with most, if not all of them and.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it is a really deep class.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just some examples I can think of, Amber, Amber Rae Pessick, you know, earned her associate's degree while in high school with all the dual enrollment classes from Ellsworth High School and HCTC.
She's the first student, the first student in Maine's history to do this. She graduated from community college before graduating from high school.
Seventy credits.
She had seventy-four credits.
Seventy-four credits. That is amazing.
And a lot of people don't remember this. She skipped eighth grade. So she's young.
Yeah.
She's sixteen.
Yeah, she'll be, she's admitted to University of New England.
Yep.
She'll start there as a junior and she's already been admitted to their.
Four by four.
The four by four into their medical school, which she'll be beginning medical school at age eighteen. So.
And our first owner essay is correct for graduation.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, I mean, we provide great opportunities for students who want to excel and do well. And, and this is an example of that.
Yeah.
And Maddie Henry is another example. So.
I was gonna say, look at Maddie.
There's so many examples, yeah.
Who created this play.
Mm-hmm.
And then was part of the performance and.
Designed the costumes.
Helped direct it and designed everything and.
And made the costumes.
Won a state championship because of it.
Yep.
And we can't forget, no way.
There's a lot of opportunities. You have to just grab hold of them, right?
Mm-hmm.
And take it where it can go, but.
Absolutely.
A lot of support.
I think they did all this despite COVID.
Exactly.
Despite every obstacle in front of you, you guys have risen to the top in a way that is rarely seen in this country. So, well done. Very well done to all of you.
Yeah, their freshman year was the only traditional year they had in their high school career.
Wow.
You're amazing. Great job.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford.
Bye.
Bye.
Stay home.
Thank you, guys. I must say, I'm a little jealous of Travis today getting to do the opening pitch at the, at the Seadogs game. So that's why I'm here on his behalf this evening. So things have been going really well at the middle school level. We had our last Gold Wing Award ceremony just this week and wrapped that up for all of the grade levels. So that was a fantastic showing there. And of course, our eighth grade students have their promotion ceremony on Monday. So we're, we're looking forward to having them celebrate moving on into high school. We've been doing our field trips all this week. Some of the other things that our students have done is they've taken part in the Down East Salmon Federation's Fish Friends where they got to release a bunch of Atlantic salmon. So that was a pretty, pretty special opportunity that they had to do. And along with that, we had some of our students go to the Cole Museum and have the opportunity to interview some of the veterans from as, I believe, as far back as World War II. So that was a pretty unique opportunity for those students also. And then that was also mentioned, we have been doing our field trips over to HCTC that we concluded with that yesterday with our eighth graders. So, you know, they now have the opportunity to kind of put that in their, in their frame of thinking because with the tours not being allowed over the last few years, they've, a lot of them have not even seen the, the technical side of things yet. So it'll be a, a great opportunity when they sit down with our guidance counselors to be able to, to think about, you know, those potentials that, that they would have to do. So outside of that, everything has been going well. And hopefully the, the weather will change for us tomorrow so we can get some of our field day activities back outside again. So, but that concludes my report. Do you folks have any questions?
I think the weather forecast for tomorrow is good.
I believe so.
As Mr. Clifford pointed out, so yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're lucky. It's, it's got a hold because a lot of important things have been rescheduled for that day.
Congratulations, correct?
Yes.
Athletic things, excellent field day.
Yes.
Quite a lucky group of students.
Yes. All those things we need to do to keep kids engaged at the end of the year outside.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. But it's working? Okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm April Clifford and I'm the principal at the Ellsworth Elementary Middle School. And you have my report, which was today. So I appreciate your patience with that. It's been a relatively busy week. I've had the opportunity to go to the fire department and they were wonderful. All of our second graders did the museum in Ellsworth activity as they walked down to the fireplace and they got a tour of the fire station where a lot of people don't go. We were able to see the September eleventh monument. They shared that with the students and it was a wonderful experience for all involved. I had actually never had been inside the firehouse to see that. So it was pretty, it's quite moving for the older staff and the students were amazingly respectful and they had a great time. We also have been, one of our teachers is related to the conductor of the Down East Railway, the scenic railways. So we have had a couple of train trips this week. Kindergarten and first grade, we're able to go together and then second grade is headed up tomorrow. So it's going to be a great day for that. And I also wanted to acknowledge our community resource, the Nolton Park. All of our grade levels at the K-4 side of the building have had an opportunity to spend several hours to just a couple hours there utilizing the playground and the splash pad. It's such a great community resource and a great way to celebrate and end of the school year. Grade four was able to visit the Cole Transportation Museum. The kindergarten was at the Discovery Museum yesterday, which is absolutely fabulous. And grades one and three that aligned with their curriculum, they went to the Woodlawn Museum for the grand's performance of Charlotte's Web. So it's been an amazing week. I've had a lot of fun working with kids. In addition to that, the Unified Arts Team from Mrs. Baldwin, Mr. Norwood, Ms. Reed, Ms. Bland, all of our title staff have been supporting our teachers in doing field day. So they've done a scavenger hunt at the high school. They've done parachute games on the softball field. It's really just been a great way to celebrate the end of the year. I do have a couple of special things. The Walkathon was a wonderful experience for all K-8 students. I want to thank the PTF for obviously organizing this event and supporting our students. And we're actually drawing for prizes for the fundraising. Students who raise a certain amount of money are eligible for a prize. And so we're drawing for prizes tomorrow. I also want to thank Jessie Thomas and the Ellsworth Mason's Laguna Lodge Number Forty for supporting our literacy program. We have an opportunity every break. If students read throughout break and fill out the sheet, return the sheet, they, like a reading log, they get their names eligible for, to be drawn for a bike. The lodge provides ten bikes and ten helmets and we are drawing those on Monday. So I'm very excited about that program. I do want to put a shout out especially to Tina Young. She organizes it. She tracks our student participation, which I've reported out as throughout the year has gone on. And it's a great thing. We held our volunteer training a little while ago and I wanted to thank all the volunteers who were able to support us. Being in a difficult year, we've talked about this before, being short staff and having subs. And if it wasn't for our returning college students and our volunteers, we wouldn't have been able to provide the quality of education experiences that students had on the field trips. I just wanted to really take a minute and thank everyone who took time to do that. It's made an impact in our students and our end of the year. And kind of the hard one for me, we have two retirements at my school. One is Debbie Richards. She is our district instructional coach. She is definitely me, not as a new administrator, but as a new principal in this role. She's really been a good mentor for me and I value the time that we've spent together. And I just wanted to acknowledge her publicly at this meeting for that. And I'm probably Mrs. Cal. Mrs. Cal's a really tough one. She, she's a hard one. She's an amazing grade two teacher. She's been here. I know Paul has some information he'll share that I have shared with him. I just, I want to publicly acknowledge her. She has really made an impact on the Ellsworth community and the students here. Last year, she had the valedictorian and the salutatorian and she had a valedictorian that actually attended a different school as well. She's just really impacted the students here. There is a, I'm getting together something for her and one of the students shared that one of the things that he loved about her was that she never left anybody out. And I just, just makes me, just big shoes to fill at our school. And she has been kind of a driving force for me in my young years here. And I know that she was well respected by Ms. Lewis and Ms. Peterson Roper as well. She's just a phenomenal teacher and I want to thank her publicly for her time and her commitment to the Ellsworth school system and to our school. And that's all I have on my report. Any questions?
Do you need a tissue?
I might. I'm gonna have a hard time. I'm gonna have a hard time. Yeah.
Clearly been over at school with your feet up doing nothing. That's all.
Yeah. All right. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you all of our administrators for this marathon of a last month of school that you guys have all been going through and doing so much well above and beyond your normal duties. And as a community, we thank you, all of you.
Absolutely.
Who else is gonna make me cry saying all that stuff? All right. I really appreciate having the opportunity to present and I love it. I'm excited. Quarterly is just enough. So I just wanted to really recognize some really wonderful things that are happening with staff right now in special education. Over the last several years, main educators in the DOE have played a really critical role in developing what's called the multi-state assessment, alternate assessment. And it's for children who have significant cognitive disabilities. Right now, there's ten states participating and there will be a review committee this year in Minnesota. And there have been panelists chosen to participate. And Lisa Bachman, the assistant director here, has been chosen to participate. She'll be looking very closely at the math bias in grades three through eight and at eleven as well. And this professional development opportunity takes her away for next week. And here's the best part, it's paid for by Cognia, not us. Even better, Suzanne Bell was also chosen. She's our teacher at the middle school for us. And she was chosen to attend in Minneapolis. But happily, she's not going because she's going to go with HCTC to Atlanta because we have a middle school student who has earned gold and earned enough credit to be able to go there and participate. And it's funny that you present tonight, Mr. B, because the, the project, the speech was describing how to properly search and handcuff a suspect. And he demonstrated this skill during the competition. So Suzanne will be there and I know that her heart will be full doing that. Something I also wanted to bring up is that we have extended school year services in special education. And that is something that children are looked at every year for. Either you're eligible or you're not. And it's really to keep kids' skills throughout the summer. And this year, we have a theme. We have a people in our community theme. And I'm going to give, Lisa Bachman really deserves the credit for developing this. I said, just go, do it. You did a great job last year. And I can't say enough about the community and our special educating, special education staff, both teachers and ed techs who have said, yes, I will commit my time this summer after this crazy year we've had to allow these kids to have the program. We've expanded the day by one hour. My hope is that we might be able to get more time as we move forward. But I wanted to give you a little bit of a, an overview of what their weeks look like. They're clearly going to still have their specially designed instruction, but we're going to sneak in the learning with the fun stuff. So week one, Visual and Performing Arts Week, and they're going to go to the Woodlawn and see, they're also going to see Into the Woods. They'll be doing a community theater workshop with Nick Turner. So I think that's a wonderful thing to bring to the kids. The second week, they're going, they're, sorry, their, their theme is Maine Wild Animal Adventures. They're going to go to Bird's Acre and they will be getting a tour there in some detail. They're also going to have a game warden presentation, an ocean touch tank, and a lobster man or lobster woman will also be there for that. Their third week is health and wellness and they will be going to the Ellsworth Y Swimming. And their activities will include yoga, Top Chef Healthy Snack. They did that last year. It was amazing. And they will be participating in outdoor sports. And the fourth week, they're going to do Nolton Park Cleanup. They're doing community service. And they will also try to, you know, see what they can do around EHS and other places like that. So I think it's just a great program and I'm really excited to be able to be part of that without all kinds of meetings. And I really am excited to share this piece at the high school. And I know it because I walked in one day looking for our life skills teacher, Kayla Reardon. And I'm like, why are all the lights off? Well, she stepped out and she told me they were doing yoga. So she introduced a yoga unit that was supposed to be a part of something, a unit that would actually give them exposure to several different things. I mean, treadmill, weights, that kind of thing. But they literally begged her to keep doing the yoga. So this class, the life skills class at the high school, still does yoga every single day. They've added meditation, guided thinking, and deep breathing exercises. And the beauty of this is the kids, when they get frustrated, they're using the skills. So one of the kids actually gets very excited and runs to the yoga mat when it's time. So she's going to continue doing this. And I think that's really creative and it's something that I didn't necessarily expect to see happen in that classroom. Another really exciting development is that Amy Bowles is working with us to explore what we can do for CTE programming for our students with special needs. We, we have many kids that go to HCTC and do a wonderful job and it's a great fit. But there's also kids who are kind of betwixt and between and they really can't go there and get something out of it. And unbeknownst to me, there's an actual program that will work for them. So we've just started talks and what that might look like and it wouldn't roll out if we officially start, not this fall, but the next fall. But this upcoming year, we have some wonderful ideas and some great ways to really expand what kids are doing in the life skills classroom because now they can stay through age twenty-two. So it's important for us to have that community collaboration and the ability to give them those skills that they're going to have as they transition out into the world. And last, but definitely not least, we have a retirement too in special education in the five-eight group. It's Sheila Gallagher. And she has thirty years of teaching experience. She's been in both Maine and Virginia. She's worked in every kind of program there is self-contained, composite, resource, alternate high school programs. She's co-taught. And I could read exactly what's written here, but I'm going to speak from the heart. If I want to go to somebody and know it's done right and done right the first time with the best possible care given to the child and the record-keeping both, I know that Sheila is the person to do that. So she had a little farewell, the small farewell, and I know I wrote in it, you are not allowed to retire. That will be all. So I'm hoping very much we can have her back as a, as a long-term sub or anything. She, she's a wonderful woman and really, it's going to be hard to replace that kind of expertise and collaborative attitude. So I'm going to give a plug to the jobs I have here. We still have jobs opening. We're always looking for ed techs. Ed tech threes, they're fantastic. Anyone who's interested in the field, is an ed tech one, call me. I can tell you what it sounds like to be in the school. We are also looking for resource room teachers in the five through eight level as well as a behavior teacher K through four. And we're also looking K through eight for a five oh four coordinator. And that's kind of a turnkey operation right now. It's really, really set up well. So those are the positions we have open. If anyone have any questions?
No, but I just wanted to share with you guys some, a really fun thing about the summer program at EEMS. Last year, one of our younger students I was talking to coming back into school and I said, oh, what did you do over the summer? And they said, oh, I went to all kinds of summer camps. I'm like, oh, great, you know? What was your favorite? EEMS? I was like, oh.
Oh, that feels so good because they've really doubled down on making it awesome this year. So that's very, very exciting.
Evidently, it's the hot ticket and you guys knocked it out.
Too bad we have eligibility standards.
But that was something.
That's good to know. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
I was so glad. It's so nice to have you here.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity and I want you guys to hear more about what we're doing. There's some pretty great stuff there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel's reporting out later on.
She is.
Okay, so you're up.
And I, I, I did leave off. Mrs. Bowles is, is not here tonight, obviously, to do her report because she is a parent chaperone on the eighth grade trip with her own eighth graders.
God bless her.
So I'm.
Hallelujah.
Exactly. And all of you parents who, you know, weren't able to go, say thank you to the chaperone.
Yes.
And also I excused Annie for, for Delta tonight as well. She had prior commitments. So, okay. Let's see. So I want to say thank you to, to some folks, groups as a whole tonight. But, you know, you've, you've heard from administrators tonight and they've talked about the amazing things that, that our teachers have, have done. And those amazing things don't happen without support from the administrators. And it's night after night after night that they're out. And what's amazing to me is there's so many nights that teachers are out as well. And you all know, it's magnified at the end of the year. But they do it over and over, nonstop. And they do it wholeheartedly to help students and do the best for our community and with a smile every time. And, you know, I'm sure it's challenging. They juggle, you know, many of them, they have families of their own too and events to be at. But it is greatly appreciated. And of course, later, you know, we'll do the annual nominations. But I just want to make sure, especially during this time, that they know how much they are appreciated. And we know that you work really hard and you, we have lots of things that are, you know, just the, the typical parts of the day. And then there are challenging pieces that come your way when you're least expecting it. And you handle those pieces with great care and great tact. And you are appreciated very much. So thank you for all you do. Thank you to parents who have supported our kids all year long, especially, you know, as you heard, seniors graduating this year who have been the full, they've been in the whole range of the pandemic. And, you know, only really this year have I know, you're gonna make me cry. So you, but they really have brought their A-game and have been wonderful. And, you know, that continued right through this week with marching practices and things like that. And it's just a wonderful community of learners. And, you know, they've had every excuse in the book that could have been there to, to slack off, not come back to school, disengage. And they've worked hard and they've helped each other through it as well. And it was fantastic to be in the auditorium last night at the high school and hear, you know, the HCTC director talk about, you know, the accomplishments of the technical center students who are also EHS students. But as the students were, you know, coming in, in their regalia and the music was playing and people were in the auditorium and they were just well. And it was just something normal. And there's been so little of just normal. And the energy in the auditorium was palpable. And the excitement, you know, from the parents and the audience, you know, I mean, it's, you know, that night, it's a, it's a reverent night, you know? It, it's a, it's a formal night. And it was, it was pretty exciting. And it was done very professionally. And all the students supported each other. But it was great to just see some of those things, you know, going on. But, and a tremendous amount of staff, the things that they attend, even when they don't necessarily need to be at everything. And yet, yet they are, event after event after event, to show their support of our leaders and parents as well. It's, it's appreciated, you know? It's, it's easy to, to look and, and see only maybe, you know, the challenging things that are going on. But there is so much good that is going on. You know, we, we always have things to improve on. Every district does. You've heard me say that before. But there are really great things going on. So I appreciate all those people who work together and help us, help us do those things. So, let's see. Just make sure here I didn't leave anything off. Seniors did their walk-through down at the elementary school. It was pretty nostalgic from what I heard. You know, they forget what it's like to be a kindergartner and how short, little, tiny those kids are. And, you know, I, I appreciate that they, the school made time for them to do that because they really did enjoy that. And, you know, someday those kindergartners will, you know, be remembering when, when those kids walked through. And I know seniors, a lot of seniors this week were reading back letters that they wrote as freshmen that teachers set aside, you know, and reading back those, you know, dear senior self that they wrote as a freshman and pretty shocked at what they, what they, as freshmen. Lot of reflection. Let's see. I think that I have covered everything that I have in there. The rest is, I'll cover later under some of our items. So thank you.
Kelly and Katrina, would this be a good time to, I know, to acknowledge some of the long-term.
Yes.
Staff people who are retiring? Because I think most, if not all of them have, we've had letters of resignation or retirement from them that have been reported on at past meetings by Mrs. Kane. But I think that as we approach the very end of the school year, it might be nice to just, and we've already heard acknowledgement from Carol Anne and a little bit from, and also from April. But we have some other members who are leaving us, so.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to jump in and say a word about Mr. Ray Daly.
All right.
So he's kind of near and dear to my heart. He started working for the Ellsworth School Department fifteen years ago when I was a school health coordinator. So we worked pretty hand in hand, worked very closely together. When he started, our cafeterias were far from where they are now.
Yep.
So lots of candy and ice cream and chips. And Ray has done a remarkable job. Our schools, you know? Now we bought water and salad bars. He's won multiple awards for our school system, including a state award for excellence in coordinated school health programs and nutrition services. Many years ago, he has launched the Lunchbox Program, which provides food for kids and families, as well as the Backpack Program. He's won Health Year School Challenges. He'll be very missed.
Yeah.
Big shoes to fill.
Big shoes to fill.
Yeah.
For sure.
And once again, he carried a very big burden through COVID.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, when things shut down so very suddenly and so much was at stake for so many people. You know, he had to jump in there and step up to the pump in a really big way. And he did not disappoint. He really, and he is, he's, he's had huge shoes to fill.
Huge shoes to fill. I, I can, you know, remember calling him, what are you doing? Oh, I'm delivering backpacks full of food to families. And he's just, huge heart and would do anything for kids and families.
Yeah. Yeah, I met him shortly after he started here. In fact, that's when I met you also because I had a, I was a parent of a first grader and I joined a wellness committee as a parent. And that's when I met Kelly and of course Ray also. And I was really impressed with his passion and dedication and energy. Yeah. Yeah.
He's done great things for our kids, for sure.
Spent a lot of time on the lunch line, always there to jump in. You know, if somebody's out, he was there, right on the line beside and with his staff, you know, helping wherever it needs be, you know? Never an administrator that was just behind the scenes, always right out in the front, doing the work alongside them and very much appreciated and cared for by his, by his staff.
April? Yeah, would you mind talking about, this is?
Earlier tonight, Paul asked me to say a few things about Mrs. Pelletier or Ms. Pelletier, who's retiring after being a sixth grade teacher for 20 years. I'm kind of the perfect choice because she had two of my three daughters. So she's been an integral part of a student's experience in the sixth grade wing. She's a leader on her team. She has high expectations for students. And she always reaches out to families in support of helping students meet those. Not going to say I did receive a few phone calls about my middle child, but I did. Sorry, Morgan. She really has high expectations for students and she works really hard with our families and with her team and with all the support services in school to help students be their best. And I'd like to thank her time and commitment to the Ellsworth School Department. She will be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pelletier.
So I sent some little things out about Janet Higgins and who else do we have? And Rachel, you were going to say something about, yeah, about Deb Richards.
I'm really grateful to have the opportunity to speak about Debbie Richards, who is the instructional coach here. And due to the way that the department is structured, she has been a real partner for me. And she is the instructional coach for the entire district and has also become a real collaborator with me in thinking about how we design the curriculum and also how to support teachers. Because she is on the ground at times when I can't be and, and works with teachers one-on-one and is such a unique personality. She, she and I both come from very large school districts. She came, she's from Texas and I came from Miami-Dade County Public School Systems. And so we, what, both came at different times from very different places from Ellsworth. And we had that in common, very top-down school districts as opposed to local school districts. And so we felt like fish out of water, but had that in common and we're learning at the same time. And she, being from Texas, has always been someone that people love to talk to. And she loved to talk about Texas and is a Fisher woman and loved to hunt and loved to talk about her Texas stories and always got me through the day by telling me things like not to worry that the storm will run out of rain and would get me through on my hard days. And I am going to miss her terribly. She is someone who will work with a teacher on their worst days and has had amazing advice. Teachers have come so far, they've come and told me how much her advice has meant to them. She's run book groups. She has worked with teachers and seen them come so far. They have sought out her advice. They have papered their, her door with designs. Art students have come, she's come back from days off and found art projects because of their, she has little kids, when I'll be zooming with her, she'll go, hold on a minute, Rachel. And those little kids will come up and start talking to her. They just get passionate about wanting to meet with her. So she said, I'm a, you know, I'm a high school administrator by trade, but all these little kids will come and like tug at her heartstrings. So she has been, had every single job in the world, but really has a very soft heart and has done teaming at the high school and worked with teachers in, from kindergarten to, you know, adult ed, where she actually started before we were able to convince her to be an instructional coach. She's learned grants with me. Through COVID, we would Zoom. And so both of us kind of kept our sanity by Zooming, you know, eight hours a day and working on grants and working on ways to support teachers and getting them the resources they needed because of her passion of working. Even on weekends, she would text me and say, you want to do some work? I'm going crazy here. Her, and this is someone who had retired in Texas. So this is someone who is so dedicated to education, but she just could not stand the cold. So she's decided to move back to Texas. And so I am thrilled for her that she gets to do that. She came back up here because her husband's from Maine. I'm very happy for her, but our whole school district is going to miss her terribly. Everyone that she's told has just texted me and said, is she for real? Is she really leaving? So I know the whole district is going to be the poor for it, but we have been so rich for having her here. And I'm grateful that she was able to come.
Thank you. That was so wonderful. Thank you, Rachel.
She will be very missed.
Anybody want to take on Deb Jordan? Anyone know her?
I know her a little bit because my daughter was lucky enough to have her.
Yeah.
And that was, that was a very, Mary came into her class a little bit behind on some things. And how she brought her up and brought her along and really launched her into the next year was, was positively remarkable. And years ago, I, I did some work in the school and I got to know her then. And she is just as funny as she is smart. And she endears herself to these children in a way that, I mean, I, it's really crazy to think we're going to walk into school next year and not see her face there.
I know.
That's hard. It's hard saying goodbye to all of these people and so many all at once, too. But she, she is part of our fabric in a very big way. And, yeah, I just don't know how we're going to find a replacement for her, really. She's, she's a big one to be losing.
Yeah.
For sure.
She connects so well with kids, both inside her classroom and kids who are not even in her classroom. You know, she's, yeah.
Yeah, her humor and her passion just kept the kids engaged and they really liked going to her class. I had two kids in the class that didn't, she was a team teacher, but they didn't have her, but they had her for a couple of subjects. They, they really liked her. All the kids I've, I've ever seen there were always engaged and having fun. And she's just a wonderful teacher and she's always willing to stop and talk and let you know how your kids are doing. She just is so dedicated. She's wonderful.
A good communicator.
Very, very nice.
Yeah.
She think we need to do Bill Baker?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, because you?
I was at the Technical Center. I was fortunate enough to, to have Bill Baker show up to interview and fill the shoes left by Brian Langley when he retired. And, you know, I was new and I knew at the Technical Center and I was pretty worried because if you've been around, you know, or been up there, you know, to Mr. Langley's program, you know, it was, it was top-notch and well-respected by the community. And, you know, in came this ball of sunshine, Mr. Baker. And besides the catchy name, you know, Mr. Baker. Why, why interview anybody else? You know, and the first, first week, end of the first week, he, he started talking to me about starting the restaurant back up and, 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 you know, I, I put him off. No, no, you know, hit your feet under you and, you know. Second week, no, listen, we really, you know, these kids are great. They can do it. We really, you know, and it didn't take long. He wore me down and before you knew, you know, the restaurant was back up and running. And what an amazing community resource. And, and an excellent experience for our students to practice their skills and, you know, have the opportunity, you know, build menus and to be a server and to, you know, just hone their skills and, you know, just the events that, that we've had, you know, the gingerbread, the decorating contest and, you know, and all of those holiday buffets and special events, you know, if you don't get there early, I mean, they're just, they're packed. And the food is always great. And it's a wonderful community of learners that he's put together. So we're very happy for him to be able to retire, you know? Certainly, of course, you know, big shoes to fill.
Yeah.
You know, the next person comes and takes, takes our programs to the next level. But we were fortunate to have him here for the time that we did. I, I appreciate his, always smiling. Never seen him not smiling or willing to, can do what he has.
And although he was new to us 14 years ago, he had been in education for like 26 years prior, right? So he was very, that's why he was saying, I, I got this, I can do.
We stole him from UTC.
Yeah.
We regret not having.
You probably shouldn't say that.
And, you know, as somebody who works with some of the restaurants in the area, I can say that the things that he has taught our children is so greatly influenced. You know, you just see how the domino effect in the community. The restaurant owners who ha, who get to hire these kids, these very skilled people coming out of high school to come to work for them. When, especially at a time when it's really hard to find people and you find qualified people at that because the school goes well beyond teaching the basics. You know what? The community needs more than basics. And our students to thrive need education that is curtailed to what their needs are going to be post-high school and what their interests are. And he just took that, he was such a pioneer for that. And it, it's a big loss to our school and our community.
Yeah, and I can speak firsthand to that, the experience of having his students come and worked in a restaurant and just be able to take on all kinds of responsibilities that you didn't expect from a, a high school student. And Mrs. Bowles, who's not here tonight, put together a little surprise party for him last week. She took him out to lunch for an exit interview and just, you know, final thing. Meanwhile, all these people assembled in the, in the dining room of HCTC, their cafe. And a lot of, a lot of former students were there. Some who couldn't make it sent testimonials and former staff members were there that worked for him, you know, when he was first there. And, and it was just, it was, and he walked in there. It was one of those surprise parties that really was a surprise. He was blown away and it was so nice. Yeah, and Amy was, she, there were tears in her eyes talking about him there and also at HCTC Awards where she also acknowledged him, so.
He almost didn't make it to his second year. For my birthday, he made me a fake cake. Brought it into the staff meeting and they put it, and it was lovely, beautiful frosting all over. And I went to cut it and it was just the plastic mold over there, which was really embarrassing, but really funny.
He has a sense of humor.
There was a real hate too, but yeah, big sense of, big sense of humor.
Janet Higgins?
Janet Higgins. Do you want to take?
I can, you know, I've known Janet for a long time, Ms. Higgins. I, neither of my sons was fortunate enough to have her as a teacher, but they both got to know her. And she used to live, I live on School Street right over here. And she used to live somewhere, I think on the other side of Main Street. And we would see her walking to school in the morning, right past our house, you know, well before we would be needing to leave to get to school. She, like a lot of dedicated teachers, and she has taught with us for, how many years? Thirty-three years?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, okay. She would get to school early and she'd be walking along and I'd say, hey, look, guys, there's Ms. Higgins. And we'd bang on the window and, or yell out the window if this, if it was open and, hi, Ms. Higgins. And she's like, hi, guys. It was so great. It was just such a nice way to start the day. But she has, over the years, she's like currently a sixth grade teacher, but she has, anytime we have, you know, sometimes grade levels have four classrooms and then the next incoming grade level has, for that same grade, has six or five, whatever. They change. And sometimes we ask, ask teachers to move from one grade level to another. And she has always been willing to do that. In fact, she enjoys taking on a new challenge. And she's, she's just so vibrant. She's so much fun. She plays with the Ellsworth Concert Band in the summer. She's a talented musician and just a great person to know. So we're going to miss her a lot.
Absolutely. She's my oldest, who is 23. She's still his favorite teacher of all time.
Yeah.
Fabulous.
She's a wonderful woman. Oh, so happy for all of these people retiring, but so sad for us.
Yeah. Just goes to show how much we have to work hard to keep people with us.
We've got a custodian retiring after 16 years, Gupta Goslosky. And I don't really know her, but I do know that custodians are among the unsung heroes of any school district. And they do so much to keep our schools running and clean and safe. And I've seen so many custodians, you know, who engage with the kids in such a great way. And then, of course, during COVID, being a custodian was doubly hard. And it became a challenge for every district that I, in the country, to, to, to hire enough custodians. We're always looking, right? So to have someone who served with us for 16 years is, is really remarkable and.
She could have retired and, you know, could have done a lot of different things, you know, concerned her health and what have you, but stayed and kept her experience here, which is what we most needed at the time.
Yeah. So we wish her all the best. Thanks for sticking it out this long.
Right. I thank you personally, as a parent whose child has barfed in every classroom she's ever been in. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate 16 years of cleaning these things and taking care of children like my own, who would otherwise be mortified, but has always made her feel, oh, it's okay. We got this. We can handle this. Some kids just have needs that are different than others and my kid being one of them. And she's a, you know, this is, once again, has, has made every day wonderful and then stepped up during COVID in the worst of times, right there when, you know, we did, she came back, she came to back into these schools before there was a vaccine available and did the job. You know, we cannot thank her and all of our staff enough for that.
So finally, we've got Jeannie Kell. There's a picture of her here. April provided me with some information about Mrs. Kell, that she began working for our district on March 10th, 1986. So that was over 36 years ago. She began her teaching assignment on September 1st, 1988. She has spent most of her career in grade two. She is an amazing teacher. She differentiates instruction so that each student learns at their highest level. And she is a great mentor teacher and simply loves teaching and learning. And, yeah, I talked to another second grade teacher yesterday, Sarah Miller, who popped in for a cup of coffee on the way to work. And I showed her this thing that, which I'll talk about in a second. But she said, Sarah's like, oh, I'm going to miss her so much. And she, Mrs. Miller's classroom is on a different floor from Mrs. Kell's. And she said, I really wish our classrooms could have been closer together because I could have gained so much from being in her proximity. Mrs. Miller's been teaching at us for just a few years. She's, she's amazing, too. So my son had her in second grade. My son Felix, and in fifth grade at EEMS, kids get an assignment to write about a hero in their school. And Felix wrote his essay, My School Hero. And he said, my hero is Mrs. Kell, my second grade math teacher. Mind you, this is three years later and he's in fifth grade. She has made a difference in my life at EEMS. And he talks about just all the ways he helped her. And, but one of the things is he managed to stab himself with a pencil at one point. And she, he, he said, the lead stabbed into me and now I have a pencil marker in my skin. When this happened, Mrs. Kell was right by my side. And that, that phrase just, yeah, makes me so grateful for her. I just came across this the other day. I was cleaning out a drawer in our kitchen, so I'm glad I did. And I can't imagine EMS without Mrs. Kell.
She was a great mentor to me at the Norton School as a, you know, new teacher, third, fourth year teacher, still, still new, but changing grade levels and, you know, liking the excitement of, of change, you know, from, from year to year. And was a partner in doing a looping program for, for several years. And, but her experience brought a lot of confidence to me. And, well, if she thinks we can do it, then, you know, we can do it. And she just had great materials and a great way with students. And I learned so much from her and appreciated that she took me under her wing. It was pretty helpful.
Those are their retirees.
Yeah.
They will be missed, for sure.
I know it took some time and I, I appreciate that, though. Thank you. I mean, you know, I, we spend the majority of our time, you know, dealing with some perfunctory tasks, but, you know, challenges and we've. you know, challenges. And we've spent a lot of time on challenging things like budget and, you know, you know, it's been, you know, it's been COVID. So so much has been a challenge. And so it's important to celebrate and to take time to talk about the good things that have been happening too. And we're excited for the new people that are, that are coming in. And they too will find excellent mentors if they come into our system. And you'll help us make more great things happen. So sure.
Moving on, committee reports. I believe the only committee that has met is transportation.
Transportation and policy.
And policy.
We're the same two people in the same both committees. What we were looking at, kind of, we weren't sure, straddled both. So it was, it was good that we were on both. We, we had a concern brought to us about handicap parking. And I actually have some people here tonight that I think want to talk on this. Would this be a good time to have them? Would you guys like to talk about this now?
Yeah.
Come on up. Thank you so much.
Thank you for listening.
And we're talking about the handicap parking access at EEMS.
That's fine. Yep. Oh, there's a set for each. Yeah.
Wow.
Perfect.
She's pretty nice.
You're hired.
Yes.
All right. Good evening. My name is Felicia Walsh. I am here today to advocate for handicapped parkers and access to handicapped parking. A few years ago, the do not enter sign was knocked down. And when it was replaced, it was moved up by the light pole in a new location, blocking access from that point to handicapped parking. During recess, there are cones that are put up blocking access to handicapped parking. This can be seen in picture one. There's also a sign with an arrow with the word parking pointing in the direction to the Shore Road during recess. I'm sorry, I'm very, it's okay.
You're doing great.
Pointing in the direction to the Shore Road during recess, leading to an access point that is not accessible for handicapped parkers. Please see picture two. A parent, guardian needing to access, and needing access to handicapped parking during these times would have a difficult time accessing handicapped parking if they needed to pick up or drop off their child. At times such as Tuesday and today, the cones were still up until pickup time. In the afternoon, most of us know that the pickup line backs up into the Pond Road. Please see picture three. If a person who does not need handicapped parking, needed or wanted to park, they can get there during the afternoon about 2:25, 2:30, and still have access to parking. A parent or guardian needing to access handicapped parking would either have to wait in line to park or come 40 to 45 minutes early. If someone had an appointment at the end of the day and needed or wanted to pick up their child early, again, access to handicapped parking would be difficult due to the line and the do not enter sign. My husband is a disabled veteran with handicap plates. Our children have been going to this school for 10-plus years. One of our children is 22. In all the years, it wasn't an issue until it was made an issue when the do not enter sign was moved. I'm asking you all to please make handicapped parking accessible at all times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We should be keeping in mind to put that together.
So Elizabeth and I met with Ms. Walsh in the parking lot and we looked at what was going on. And here's the thing, as you remember what she was saying, that sign was not always there. It was moved a couple of years ago. And I remember when it was moved because I showed up one day, there it was. And I went and said something to the then building administrator, saying, we can't have that there. That, we're going to get dinged on handicap accessible parking. Our handicap people cannot then get to the spot. And for, I know it was brought up, but it was never dealt with. And this, if I remember correctly, we were having issues with the loop. And so some expert at some point was brought in. And I believe we were told that sign was moved because this expert said to. Well, I don't know who this expert was, but the end result is during certain hours of the day, there's absolutely no way a handicap vehicle can access the parking spots without doing something illegal, which, right there, like, we're done. Like, this, it has to be changed. We, so Elizabeth and I, we met, we met with parents and we looked at it. And really, we have outgrown our parking areas. We need to redo, not just for the parents, but for the teachers, et cetera, et cetera. But that takes money and time. We will get there, but we're not going to get there today. So how, how can we, how can we fix this today? Because really, this should not go on for one more day. Oh, my partner in crime right here.
I have a work meeting.
It's okay.
Rushing from one to the other.
We're glad you're here.
So I was telling them how we met about the parking?
Yes, I was listening to it on the way up the road.
Oh, you're so wonderful. So to get this situation solved immediately, what needs to happen? Is that do not enter sign coming? And I get why it's there. People, you have to enter the parking lot by going against the grain at the loop, which isn't ideal. However, it is two lanes. It was designed that way. It was designed poorly that way, granted, but it's all we've got right now. And until we can redo the parking lot, we have to utilize it. We have to take down that sign that says do not enter. We have to allow people to come through there to get those handicap parking spots. Otherwise, there is between, most of the school day, you cannot get there at all. And by law, we cannot disallow that even for one minute. And in a very technical sense, it is not really legal that the cars are lining up for school, turning their engine off and not being able to move out of the way when somebody's coming down. That's being done simply via tradition, but at the same time, time and space is of the essence. So I can understand why we would continue to allow that. However, continuing to allow that means we absolutely, positively have no other choice at this very moment but to take that sign down. In the meantime, yes, parents, I get it. Like, it's a parking lot and people are coming and going and it's not fun for kids. But if your child is in elementary school, you have a duty to come all the way up to the building with that child. That child should not be entering or exiting your car that is parked without you. You have to. So you have to be that child's eyes and ears. And you have to know there are going to be cars coming in that way. And you have to watch out for them. That is your job. The drivers are going to do their best to watch out for them. However, I was once a driver, no, I was actually not. I was once watching a child who darted out between parked cars and came that close to getting hit. It happens in a split second. So drivers need to be aware. Parents need to be aware. It is 15 miles an hour or less there for a reason. We need to keep that in mind. But there isn't another choice. We have to allow people to get those handicap parking spots.
So Ellie, if we took the sign down, people could always access the handicap spots via the Shore Road?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. And like, I was, I was at the school today for something and I got there at 1:50. And I'm sure the administrators see this too. I got there at 1:50 and the cars for pickup were already lined all the way up past, like, probably almost a quarter of the way, not just in front of the school and the loop, but up the actual road. Like, I was in shock by how many people were there. I joke that you must have to get there at 1 o'clock to be the first in line. But when I got there today at 1:50, I really thought, you must have to get here at 1 o'clock. And I do want to stress to the administrators that Abby and I did talk also about having another, like, this is our temporary solution, but that there needs to be another meeting because there's so much. Go ahead, April.
Well, it impacts, I mean, they're blocked off because of recess and apartment for safety.
Exactly.
So it's, you know, there's a, there's a whole host of challenges. And when the, when the project was approved, you know, we knew, I remember that, that traffic was, you know, the site was tight. And, you know, in the site survey for traffic, it was revealed that the Ellsworth District has a higher number of parents who transport their students than many other districts.
And maybe even more so post-COVID.
Yes. And so certainly that has compounded the challenges. And it would be worth talking with Oak Point again and having them take a look at that when they're here and seeing, you know, looking at where we are at right now, maybe doing some of the traffic cams. And maybe there are some things that need to be changed, having them help assist us with that.
Right, right. We just need a new parking lot.
And as a, as a parent who's there for pickup 99% of the time, I feel for the people who have to be out getting the names of people, but even more so for whomever has to be up by the road. Like, I think that, that this parking issue is an issue that needs to be addressed immediately, but that the process itself could be looked at more closely with the input of the people who are standing out there every single day.
And over the summer's the perfect time to.
Precisely. Right, right. We have some time for that one.
April, did you want to? You were there and then you weren't.
Thank you. I do have a concern about that because what's happening is once we open that piece, people behind where they load for food, that area, parents will stop and drop. So they'll stop there, kids go, and then they continue on. So I just, I think if you're going to add access to that, there's another danger there as well. And I didn't hear that mentioned. And I just wanted to make sure that as you're talking about this as a whole, that that's another concern.
That's a good point to bring up and to remind all of our parents that unless you are parked or you are in that part of the loop, you do not have the right to stop and impede the flow of traffic. And it is, it's incredibly unsafe and you could be ticketed for it, really.
And your child could be in danger, more importantly.
Exactly. But there, I mean, the, when you come in off the Shore Road here and when you come from the stop sign here, those are still, those are not private roads owned by the school. Those are public roads. There's a difference. Because of that difference, whereas the loop part on this part, that's private. So on these pieces of the road, you have to obey every single law that would apply, say, out here on Main Street. Very important. When it comes to the part of, the small part of the loop, we get to make the rules for that because that is private. That's why we can move the sign without permission from the DOT. But yes, if you are, if, everybody just bear with us till the end of the year. Let us try to find a much better permanent solution. And it would be best if people were respectful and if only handicapped people came through there. That would, you know, mitigate the danger the most. But we need to, we need to understand that if you have a problem with somebody parking in any which way or form, it is your duty to go to the building administrator, to not confront that person in the parking lot. We have people trained for that. And we, as I said, we just need to get through to the end of the year. We have looked at the green spaces. There are, there is room to move things around. There is room to make more spots available, to make entering and exit better. But we, we need time and money to get there.
So Oak Point Associates, who worked on that project, is also working with us for the HCTC design and conversations that are happening in partnership with local businesses. So I will reach out to them. I just spoke to them about another matter last week and ask them to join us in a conversation. And we can, you know, jump on with them. In the past, they've done things, you know, even aerial surveys that, you know, they take photographs and look at pieces in a whole different way. And I'm sure they can look at the growth that we've experienced and the challenges that we're having now and work with us to design a solution that will be safe, meet the needs of everyone. And, you know, it's a safety issue both for students, you know, it's an access issue.
It's stiff.
Yes, there will be a cost, but it's, it's important. I mean, it's twice a day, every day that we deal with the loop issues. You know, this isn't the first time.
And this has been something that has, we've been dealing with parking issues and the loop issues hard for about four years now. And the fact of the matter is, it's not going away. It's only getting worse. And the only solution is, we need money to make this happen. And every year, when it comes to budget season, we are pushing off capital improvements because we're trying to not increase taxpayer, money to the taxpayer. But at the same time, had we fixed this four years ago, it probably cost 50% less than what we're going to pay now to fix it. So enough.
We might be able to get grant funding though, where it's.
It'd be, yes, that would be great. But I think everybody out there needs to understand, like, how budgets are made, how they work. And every time we don't get things approved, there's a cost. You don't, don't think we're saving taxpayers a dime because we're not. Every dime, every penny we don't spend upfront the first time, we spend 130% of that later on to 150% later on. This is a big example. We should have done that years ago. And now we, now this is where we're at.
So next steps, Katrina, you're going to reach out?
I'll give you just the OPA and then we'll meet again.
Okay.
And thank you for your continued and patience with.
I have something to say.
Sure.
Is it about this issue?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's Felicia.
I brought up, I have three girls, two of them of which already have graduated high school.
Could you state your, could you state your, sorry?
My name is Siobhan Cobb.
Yep.
I have three daughters, two have graduated high school. My oldest is 35 and my middle is 32 and my youngest is 10. I had her 10 years ago. I was 46 years old when I had her. And I've been a big part of the school system with my kids. I've always contribute, done everything with my kids. But when it came to my little girl watching her mother be verbally and nastily assaulted in the parking lot, calling me an F and an FC, and I know you all know those words, that was very demeaning in front of my daughter. And because of the sign being the issue, which you all are looking at, everybody who's ever gone into that parking lot has always shown the most respect to get in and to get out. Unfortunately, somebody decided to be judge and jury. And a lot of the children heard this man's mouth. And it was, it was very demeaning for anyone who had to hear it. And I don't, I don't believe, you know, that, I've seen a lot of the parking issues. I see parents stopping as you're coming off the Shore Road, stop right there where your hallway is and dropping your kid off. Alls it takes is one little kid going, hey, Ma, you know, and then boom, you know? Or not having a cross guard at the end of the street by the Y. There's been quite a few times that I've sat there and not seen a cross guard. And I understand that everybody, but if anybody reached out to a parent, I think a parent would say, sure, I'll do it, you know? I mean, right now, I can't do a lot of stuff because I need a new hip right now. But, you know, I, I know that a lot of people would make, because everybody, everybody, I know me, including, I want to see a kid be safe at school, you know? But this shouldn't have to happen in our schools, you know? And for any child to, to hear their mom being called names by an adult, you know? I want to make my kid safe. This is my last one. I ain't having no more. You know? I, I miss that COVID took a lot of our lives away to go into the schools and participate. You know, I, I, I miss that COVID took a lot of our lives away to go into the schools and participate and be there. But, you know, having a handicap situation that I'm in, I'm grateful for the parking being up that close because I can't make that. I can't make the walk. I mean, if I could, I would, but I can't. And there's a lot of people that are worse off than I am or needing that accessibility. It's, it's, it's extremely important. And I appreciate you all listening and taking their time because it's just a, it's just an important thing to make sure everybody's safe in the school system. And I was, I was a little nervous. I, I approached the guy because he gave me the, he gave me the finger, you know, when I first came in. So I drove my car back and I says, "You got a problem? Take it up with the school." So he got a little nasty, but I'm not going to back down because I fight for my kids. I fight for anything that's right because that's who I am. So I appreciate that you all taking the time. And I hope that this just gets solved at some point. And thank you for letting me speak on that because I don't want to see any other parent go through what my kid went through.
Dropping your kid off at school should not be the stressful part.
And we appreciate you coming here tonight to share your experience. And I'm so sorry that you had to endure that. That's awful.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's pretty pathetic, but, you know, you got people out there who are nasty. So it's, it's up to us as, you know, individuals to make sure that doesn't happen.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's my birthday and I'm here.
Happy birthday.
Birthday.
That's how strong I feel about it. I, I let my kids go. I have to get a cake and I got some nice stuff.
Don't you get a real cake? Just making sure.
So I have to ask, do we need a motion to remove this, a, a vote to remove the sign?
We don't. We just need to take care of it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you. I know administrators were very suddenly tasked with this hot mess. And I thank you guys for being there, for taking care of it. And I take responsibility that this is our committee and our problem and it's us to solve. And if anyone doesn't like it, you know, blame me. Or it's not even hard to blame me.
Thank you, Abby. Do you have anything additional to add regarding policy committee?
Uh, no, because we weren't sure if we were going to have to write a policy for this. If it was just, we were, we were ready to go each other way.
Okay, wonderful. All right. Mrs. Kane, any old business?
No.
All right, that brings us to I, public participation. And before we get started, when, if you choose to come up to the podium, um, please identify yourself and you will have two minutes to speak.
Two minutes?
Do you have something to give to you? Should I get it out?
Is there one for each person? One packet for each person? Sure, I'll pass it. We'll pass it right now. Thank you very much.
My name's Gwen Clark. This notice is to provide you with the descriptions of unconstitutional illegal actions that you have taken that have endangered the health of children attending this school through establishing mass mandates, PR, PCR testing, segregating students, attempting to bullying scared children to want, who want to get the vaccine, and encouraging them, they can choose for themselves what they want and when, that they don't need parents to do so. Encouraging children to declare if they're transgender for extra credit privileges or to participate in activities. This includes forcing vaccines and masks on school employees and employees feeling they can't express an opinion. All of our children have had two years isolated and captive for adults to force their own agenda down their throats when they should be getting as much help with educational classes that they have fallen behind in due to the turmoil. Parents have the right to vote on the educational material that is being taught in our schools. We also have the right to view, examine, and approve or disapprove all material that the board would like to introduce in the schools. You were elected to serve the public. That's what you are, public servants. To represent the parents and taxpayers of Elsworth, all of them. You took oaths of office that stated that you would support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Maine and that you would discharge all the duties you were responsible as an Elsworth School Board member according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Maine. You violated your oaths and failed miserably to uphold any of this. We live in America. We're free to live our lives without restrictions.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Unlawful mandates, reelected government officials. I'll shorten it up. A $25 million budget, no cuts to training for CRT, SEL equity and diversity is incomprehensible. Elsworth taxpayers should be shocked that they're being asked for this sort of money for a school that is failing. 67% lower than average on the state in math, 36 in English, and 47% in science.
Thank you, Gwen.
You violated your office and because of this, you failed our kids. And schools will be fired.
Thank you, Gwen.
Thank you.
Okay. You've got 24 hours to respond.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I will move on to item J, new business. Number one, consideration of teacher nomination.
Thank you. So I did have a teacher nomination. We haven't quite finished up with that as it turns out. Uh, and so, um, we will, um, have that on our July agenda, of course, uh, once again, and we'll move forward with that candidate at that time.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Item two, consideration of administrator contracts.
Thank you. And so, um, I have given you the list. This is our annual renewal of administrators for their, um, for their contract extensions. I presented you with that information for that group. And that was approved by the personnel committee. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, personnel committee.
I move to accept, to accept the superintendent's recommendation for administrator contract renewals.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Consideration and approval of a new math program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Happy birthday.
So, um, Rachel and April are going to, um, do this piece together. I appreciate that. They each have a, you know, everybody holds a piece of the pie. And, um, I would like to commend the very collaborative, uh, nature of the process, um, the amount of time taken in, into, um, the needs, uh, but also, um, involvement of the community, involvement of the board, uh, involvement of students. Thank you, parents who brought students to the process. And I know there were, uh, a lot of positive comments about that piece. And so, um, Rachel's going to do just the basic overview of the, um, of the program, the highlights, for the program that was approved. Uh, and then April will share some additional pieces, um, things heard, seen from the staff of note. And then if there are any additional things from folks in the curriculum committee that they would like to add. But we are very excited to have brought this process together and to have teachers who collectively decided on something and are, are excited about a new program that will better meet our needs and help our students going forward. So, to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The McGraw-Hill Reveal Math Program is being presented for approval by the Elsworth School Board as a new math resource for Elsworth Elementary Middle School. This program was unanimous, unanimously approved by the curriculum committee on May 28th, 2022. Teachers rated it highly for the following reasons. The program has extensive fluency practice, which we believe is extremely important. It has videos that students can be assigned to review at their own pace to understand a skill. It has exit slips at the end of each lesson so that teachers can know how many students understood that lesson and how many need to relearn or practice the material more before continuing to the next skill. It has what they call ignite activities, which are interesting problems or puzzles that keep kids interested and challenged. It has user-friendly online component. Uh, teachers can edit assignments, differentiate them for particular students and their needs. It has online assessments only, that only show one question at a time. And it has less problems on each page, so the overstimulation factor is less of a problem. The Reveal program also aligns closely with the main state standards. It has differentiated all students, no matter their skill level, where we met where they are, with lessons, assessments, and assignments to help them grow. It's not too wordy. Students can focus on math and not reading. It is a K8 program. Students use same language throughout their K8 experience. You'll remember that GoMath had two platforms. So, um, if you were in K5, you had one platform. And if you were in 68 and maybe you were in, um, sixth grade and you were a little bit lower, you had to go to a whole different platform to pull from below. This is a complete span from K to 8. And so it's all the same platform. And so you can go up and down easily. Students liked that, uh, because we asked students and teachers talked to their students about all the different programs. And the students about Reveal liked that there was more space to do their work. They liked the colorful presentation. They liked the E-tools. They liked the easy-to-follow online piece. And they liked the online games that helped with the skill practice. We were very lucky that Travis, um, who is our data guy, he pulled together, um, a, some data. And he, we, what we did is when the teachers, um, uh, did their ratings, he put together a whole rating system. And one of the nice pieces, um, in this go-around was that not only did, um, when he had all the programs rated, that not only did K4 rate Reveal the highest, but also 58 rated Reveal the highest and, uh, K8 rated Reveal the highest. So, um, it wasn't just K8 altogether averaging, but it was the subsets of K4, 58, and K8, as well as our special ed teachers. So it was overall really kind of knocked out of the park. And we were very grateful this year as well to include special ed. And so it was, um, we had really, um, a cross-section as well. And it was very nice, I wanted to add, that we were able to have board members and, um, students and have many of you included in the process. I'd like to add to that.
They, they'd asked me to talk a little bit about the process that we use. So what we did is we ordered, um, we started with eight programs?
Uh, we started, yes.
Yeah. So we started with eight.
Five.
Five, sorry. We started with five programs. And what, what we, what I really wanted to do for teachers was the ability for them to get, get into the program, to take it, take it in the classroom, do a couple of lessons on the line where they were, see what they thought, see what kids thought. I called it the touch-take approach. So you could take it, you could talk about it with your teammates. Um, you could divide and conquer, however teams wanted to do it. It really gave them some freedom. But the goal was for them to take each of the programs and use it in the classroom with students. Uh, take a look at the electronic piece, take a look at the teacher's guide, take a look at the unit, the fluency practice, all of those pieces. So we really approached that with a touch-take piece. And I'll be honest, the teachers really ran with it. We were really lucky. The feedback that she provided, that student's cave, they rated the lessons. They had a rubric themselves and they rated. I liked, um, this program because of the, you know, the structure of the page. They talk about the colors that they use. They talk about the space to do work. That was a big one, which I was very surprised by. The teachers really liked the exit tickets and the fluency practice, but that ability to kind of utilize that program for a little while and then move on and try something different and having kids be a part of that process. So we spent a lot of time kind of figuring that out. Um, they had rubrics to rank those. And so what we did after that is, um, we brought everyone to, they, when they came back together, they picked a representative from each grade level. They evaluated the programs. That's when board members and we had parents and other students that were present for that. And then after that, we put that back out again to teachers. And then they picked again. And then from there, we took the top three. And then, um, Rachel and Debbie organized, um, additional webinars with those companies so that we could ask clarifying questions. "I like this, but I couldn't do this." Or, "I saw this, but I wanted to use it this way. If I wanted to online sign something from, you know, two grade levels below, can I get that access?" So they had the opportunity to ask each of the finalists that. And then we brought it back and then they reranked them. So we gave them plenty of opportunities for the ranking and plenty of opportunities to go back and do that. And it included a representative. Then it went back to the whole team again. And then, you know, to a representative and to the whole team. So we felt like it was a really good opportunity for everyone to ask as many questions as they wanted, to get clarifying information from the vendor themselves, saying, "I've used this. I didn't, this didn't work right," or "this wasn't there." I know before in the past, we had bought GoMath and the personal trainer wasn't done, which is the online component, or wasn't ready for distribution. So I just, I just really wanted to share that with you and thank the teachers for the extra time to do that, to be a part of that and to test those lessons because it's more planning for them and more prep because they're not doing the same program or with the same flow. They did the same material, but it's, you know, using what we had available in a sample and using that with kids. So I do want to thank them for the extra time and, and all teachers did that at all grade levels, so. Any questions about the process that we used?
Yeah, not about the process, sorry. I.
Yeah, no.
I switched to, to probably a, probably potentially a Rachel question, but possibly one that you can answer, April, is, I'm wondering, do we feel like this curriculum would transition well into high school for the students K through 8? That they would have no issues with what they need to prepare for their high school math classes that they would be taking as well?
So the other piece about that is that, um, the, um, that it's a McGraw-Hill program. And one of the things that we're looking at now for a pre-algebra program is, um, some McGraw-Hill materials for, um, for the, uh, pre-algebra program as well. Um, our ninth grade, uh, teachers are looking at some McGraw-Hill materials for pre-algebra. But also, um, we are using, um, that some, so, so those are some of the things that the ninth grade teachers are using. Um, but also, um, one of the people who most recommended these materials is our math interventionist. She came to, um, the curriculum committee meeting and she recommended them for the teacher, for the students who are most struggling. So she thinks that those are the, the kids who are struggling, this will help them get most ready to go into algebra. So she thinks that these materials will help them most push out.
Awesome.
And I'd like, can I add?
Yeah.
I'd like to add to that because of the focus is on math in the program and less on the literacy component. We have a lot of, in conversations in meetings when we're talking with students with 504s or IEPs, in the meeting, we talk about the language that gets in the way of the math. So, um, this program does have an emphasis on math vocabulary and math language. But instead of having a six-sentence word problem, you're having a three-sentence word problem. So that's, that's the difference. And I think that that's going to really help those kids who can't get past that language barrier. So that's something I think is, is important to know.
The other way that this is going to help them bridge this is that, um, this is the one program that we've looked at that aligns to the NWEA. And so that is another way that this has been prepared them to go to the high school program, is that they have a program called Alex, which prepares them to go, to align with the NWEA. So the NWEA scores immediately align. So when they take the NWEA, it, um, it, it goes straight into their, um, scores with Alex program. And so when they see what their scores are in, in NWEA, the Alex program takes where they are low or high and immediately gives them what they need in the Alex program online and gives them the skills they need to build. So like the personal trainer in GoMath, the Alex program will give them the skills they need to strengthen their NWEA scores. So when they go in, you know, third through eighth grade, all the stuff that they're doing in class, at home, all those things that they can do online are going to be strengthening them to get their scores higher and higher and higher. So they're perfectly aligned. The other piece that I want to share with you about some of the frustrations with the online, um, computer piece with GoMath is that this was way back. One of the pieces that didn't work is that they had us confused in the computer, we found out very recently, with RSC24. So they had a glitch way back that we just found out that was never fixed, which was a serious problem in the personal math trainer. That already, we have already talked to McGraw-Hill that is all set up for the Elsworth School Department. So we have already pre-planned with them that it's going to not be a problem. So we're all set with that.
Thank you. Focus on fluency, that will be.
Yeah, Alex, the Alex program is a fluency and foundational skill focus.
Well, I, I love what you said about that there's, that people commented on the space because you're always taught to show your work and there's never enough room to show your work.
And even in the sixth through eighth grade, um, along the sides, there's, um, there's lines for the kids to be able to, so it's even, um, it's not even just open space. So in the sixth through eighth grade, there's, um, tabbed areas for the kids to, um, to put their work in lined columns, which I really like because when I was doing, um, sixth through eighth, like, algebra, I started losing track of where I was when I was doing formulas. like algebra, I started losing track of where I was when I was doing formulas. So I really like that piece too in the, in the upper grades. It's very impressive.
Right. And I would think it would make it less confusing for teachers to grade when you're trying to check the steps, but you're going through like, oh, we're on this page, but now we've got to flip back to this one, find the right problem and pick up where we left off. I think that would make it less confusing. I love that.
The other piece is I said that there's videos for kids to re-watch and learn how to do what they have to do. But what I didn't mention is there's videos for parents to watch and relearn what the kids have to do. Because as a parent, I have a fourteen-year-old who's now doing math that I don't know how to do. So I was imagining that if I had this program, I could play that video and learn how to help her.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Parents are going to, parents are going to love that.
Right, right, right.
And far less reliance on technology as well as the current program, which was something we heard in a positive way from teachers, the access and the pieces that are important to be able to have electronically, that's great, but much more streamlined, solid math program, teaching math.
Right.
Which is what we want our math program to be about.
Right.
Rachel, when do we expect these resources to arrive and how are we going to roll this out with teacher training?
So I was really excited that I just talked to the distributor and she said that once we are able to roll out the purchase orders, she said that actually if we are able to do that very quickly, she's actually at a ten to twelve day.
Wow, wow.
So if we can do that soon, she's talking about very quickly. And also I have an appointment to speak with her next Tuesday. We've already made an appointment, so, you know, crossing my fingers here this evening. We are planning on talking on Tuesday. She's redoing the purchase orders. She already has all of our numbers. We've already done anticipated numbers for our classrooms. And they have already set up rolling webinars for this whole summer. And so we have built in to our budget already to pay teachers to be able to get started this summer, taking webinars for training if they want to get started this summer and to have the books in hand. So if teachers, if teachers want to, no, no, no. And so we already have planned with her to have the training in the teacher planning days in August. But there's a lot of teachers who have emailed me already because we offer, we have like a spreadsheet that goes out in the summer, asking if there's teacher work projects that they want to do. And some of them have said, can I do math? And so the Reveal math trainer has said that they have set up webinars. And so some of them have asked, will there be math available and will there be books? And she's actually said to me that they are confident that the books could be in hand.
Great.
So if there are teachers who want to, they could be ready to go.
And how exciting that they're that excited to want to, can we do math over the summer? That's exciting.
Yeah, they're all, they're.
I'm glad they're excited and I'm glad it's in the budget and I'm hoping for your approval because the Go Math program is going away. Yep, so not to.
So I have a spreadsheet set up to have all the teachers say what they have of Go Math so that I can offer it to another school district if they would like to have.
Right. Thank you very much, Rachel.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do we have a motion to approve the new math program?
I make a motion to approve the new math program as seen here.
I second that.
Any discussion? I'd just like to say that I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I know it's, it's a lengthy process and it's much appreciated.
Yep.
Yes.
Very innovative way of going about this.
Yes, I love it.
All those in favor? Wonderful, thank you.
And thank you to all the parents and students who also participated. It was quite a wide variety. It was great.
Exactly. Students who came after school and all day, they talked about math.
They did.
Woo-hoo. There weren't even prizes.
I know.
Abby enjoyed the process thoroughly.
By Abby, her daughter, not me. Although I enjoyed it too, very much.
All right. Item four, school safety.
Yes. So certainly as of late, the tragedies related to school shootings have been on every parent's mind, every teacher, school staff member, administrator, all of us, board members. And this item is, you know, of course, not to pick apart those incidents, what could be better, what, you know? We have worked really hard here locally, as I know most districts, every district has, or, you know, if you're following the law, you're supposed to. You know, we're really fortunate here, not just in Ellsworth, but in Hancock County in that the first responder organizations that we have are so collaborative. And pre-COVID, all of those agencies, the Ellsworth Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, the State Police, anybody that carries a weapon as part of their law enforcement role, folks from the National Park Service, Marine Patrol, wardens have come together and done walkthroughs through our schools and done security lockdowns with our staff and, and actually gone door to door to see in every single classroom what we're doing and what could be improved and to speak to one-on-one to staff and meet with us afterwards, look at our plans and work collaboratively with us. Of course, the majority of the time, we're working with the Ellsworth Police Department because we're right here and we are so fortunate that they are right here. Even, you know, just, just a short while ago, you know, we had some concerns, I made a call, you know, no problem. And, and, you know, they, they were there. Can we just have some additional presence just for the, you know, the peace and comfort of, of parents, you know, that seeing them there, you know? People know who they are in our community, you know, their kids are in our schools. And, and I always appreciate that. And they would help us out in any way that they could. It's comforting to know that any agency in this county would do the same thing. It wouldn't matter. If the call went out, they will be there and they will respond. And no plan is perfect. No plan can account for every single thing that could potentially come up. But the idea is that you do plan it and you do practice for those things, not to scare children, but so that they are prepared. You know, whether it's fire drills, lockdown drills, those things need to happen. It's unfortunate in our, but, but that's where we are now. You know, and we've been there for some time. It's a sad, sad state, of course, to think the amount of time that we need to spend on this, you know, when you think about the multitude of issues, you know? We, of course, we want to improve math scores and we want kids to be fed so that they can be able to learn math and we want kids to feel safe. And the myriad, myriad of things that our public schools are tasked to do is just incredible and ever-growing. And yet I never, ever get enough. It's how, what, what can we do? How can we do this? What do we need to plan? When can we get together? From the staff, the administration. We'll keep striving. We have a lot of really good safety measures in place. We're fortunate that we have newer facilities. I will never go into the details of what those pieces are. There are always pieces that we add each year that we look at, that we can do better. I know we hear the mantra, if you see something, say something. And we, we need to do a better job of making sure our kids know to speak up and to let an adult know and, you know, to keep us in the loop. We're fortunate. We have tremendous support here, right down the road. You know, we have other rural schools that are further out and we all have our challenges to deal with, but our eyes are focused on this. Our, you know, our, it's the biggest job to keep kids safe. Our kids need to come to school and we need to keep them safe and do everything that we can to keep them safe so they can learn. There is a conference that is coming up and we can send a team. Many districts will be going. It's through Maine's new school security center. And there's a whole variety of resources and workshops, the most recent innovations and updates, recommendations for schools. I'll be sending that to you as well if you're interested in attending. Some of us, there are pieces you can do virtually if you need to be here and you, you know, you can only get away for a short while, but it interests you and you can jump onto a Zoom. And then there are other pieces that a team will be at so that we can look at our plans. We look at our plans every summer. It's required by law, you approve them. I'm not sure if you do it in August or September, but realistically in August, we will be having a summer retreat for the administration and that has come up throughout the year again as an area that we need to spend some time on and, and always be updating and making sure that, that we're on the same page and, and we're ready as best as we can be for whatever might come our way. I want parents to be assured of that as well and the board to be assured of that, that we have our eye on this ball, we won't, won't take it off and we'll continue to strive to do everything we can to make sure that our schools are, are safe. And we, we understand the concerns fully well. We live it and breathe it every day. We care about your kids and love them like you do as a parent. Our kids are there too, our own kids.
I do have a question, concern. I have a child who is now old enough that we really have to talk about these things when they happen because they see them on, on news sources. And I asked him if he knew what to do at school in an emergency like that. And he said, not really. We haven't had a lockdown drill since COVID. And that is concerning to me. I know that we don't want to huddle everyone into a corner and we don't want to share germs, but at the same time, that really was a big concern for me that we've been, however long, that means that my child that's in kindergarten has never had a lockdown drill. And that means, I know they've had shelter in places.
Yes.
But that also means that my fourth grader has not had a lockdown drill since second grade. That's a long time to forget.
Yes. Many schools have been, have, have, and you're exactly right, there have been a lot of changes because of the pandemic, even, even to fire drills. You know, when you have a period of time where kids had to be six feet apart and you have a class of 22 kids, you are going to be really challenged to get kindergarten kids six feet apart and do a fire drill. That's probably not going to work very well. It's, it's not, not a great answer, but it's, it's the honest answer. It's the truth. How do you, how do you adhere to, you know, these requirements and also adhere to, you know, the, the health requirements? And so there were, there were pieces that were softened in those requirements for a time, but next year you'll see a return to those normal drills for all schools. And I will be grateful again, as always, to the first responders who I know will be stepping back in and, and walking us through those with our new staff that we'll have in place.
And, and you know, I, I understand that, but like, I think maybe even, see, my concern is I know we only have a week of school left and I know our teachers, our staff and our administrators already have so much on their plate. But the safety that we learn at the end of this year is what carries into next year. And I understand that maybe we can't do the drill because we can't all huddle together. But maybe it's taking that 15 minutes to say, if a lockdown is called, this is what we do, this is where we go. Even just saying it out loud, I think is better than not. And, and I don't guarantee, I'm sure that some have done that. I know that what has happened, this tragedy that has happened has, has brought that. And I know some students and teachers have had conversations because it, that's what happens. But I just think that even if we can't get, get to physically doing a drill, you know, even, and it's hard, I can't even imagine being a kindergarten teacher and having a drill, let alone having to explain it without the drill and why you're doing it. But I just think it's really important because it's disgusting that we have to think about this with elementary school kids who are five and six years old, but we do. And, and I just, not to put more pressure on, and I know some may not get to that, but I do think it's really important that we just, like, like my son did say, I know we huddle together.
Yes.
But.
You're not putting on more pressure. The high school's already back on that, you know, on that track and has already moved forward and we can do what, what needs to be done between now and the end of the year to, again, you know, that's in kids' mind. It's a great security piece for the end of the year, you know, a closure piece around that we do have plans, you know, we know what to do, convey it to students and, and then it's, it's in their minds, especially in light of the events. And we pick right back up in the fall with our more traditional routines and schedules of those pieces and, and having our first responders, you know, present again to reassure us and, you know, provide us any direction that's needed for, for changes.
Do, do we, or have we in the past, I know you said that we've had walkthroughs, have we ever done any like disaster drill type training?
Oh, we do the actual lockdowns and law enforcement come in.
Okay.
And.
I know that you do the actual lockdowns.
Until the first responder at that door ensures that, sees what needs to be done if any changes and, and releases them. Yes.
But, but my curiosity is, and it may not be involving with students there because that might be a little bit too intense. But I, I wonder if, like, I mean, different, different situation, but similar. My dad worked in a nursing home and he did a disaster drill every year. They did an active shooter drill where there was someone who had physically had a card, who was the active shooter.
Yes.
That person was hidden somewhere.
Yes.
And there were people along the way who had cards that had their injuries and law enforcement and EMTs responded.
Yes.
And they timed to see how long it took them to find that active shooter.
We've done that at our schools and we have lots of places where we fix the sheetrock and fix the paint for those drills, but those, you know, those are, are important and we, we enjoy hosting those for them. People come in, administrators and teachers, they volunteer their time to be there on a weekend, you know, they set the smoke bombs off. And, I mean, it really, it helps them to practice their work, but in our schools, so they're, you know, more familiar with the layout of our schools. So we always welcome any opportunity to host those trainings. And have done that in the past.
Perfect, awesome. Excellent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I?
Sure.
And before I do, we've passed eight o'clock now and we go.
Oh, yes.
Past two hours, we don't have to take a vote to keep the meeting going, but we just need to all say, are we okay with this? And I think so.
I think all the two items are short.
Yeah. Thanks.
I just wanted to, something you said got my attention. It's encouraging students and others in the community to, if you see something, say something. I think that's a really important part of this because that's something that we can all, that's all, that's something, that's a responsibility that all of us in the community, children, staff, adults, people, just not, even if you don't have any direct connection with the school, something we can all take a responsibility for. Because in many of these shootings that we've seen in recent years, there were lots and lots and lots of warning signs and red flags and they were overlooked or not taken seriously. And that just breaks my heart to know that some of these things could have been prevented if people had, not just law enforcement, but just the community itself had paid more attention and raised an alert. We, we had an incident here several years ago where a student made a threat about shooting the school. And that was made on an online gaming platform. The online gaming platform, the company was based in Northern Europe, I believe, and that was flagged by their admins. They notified US federal law enforcement and got handed down to the FBI and the FBI Field Office in Bangor and then to the, to the Ellsworth PD. And they acted on it immediately.
Immediately?
And this person was taken into custody. There was plan, you know, there was, they made sure that there was no access to guns for this person when he was able to go back home. And ultimately this person was convicted. But, and we don't know if that would have led to anything or not, but, but I was impressed by how everything, like, the number of hours that went, that elapsed, elapsed from the time this threat was made on the gaming platform until that person was visited by the police was, it was, it was like 14 hours or 16 hours. I mean, it was a very short amount of time.
Especially for a gaming platform in Europe.
Yeah. So everything, everyone did everything right there and we may have averted a tragedy. But, and you look at some of these other places where multiple signs were overlooked. And I, I keep coming back to that and thinking about that. You know, the lockdown drills and all this other stuff, these are important, having law enforcement, having a safety plan, having law, great law enforcement in our area able to respond. But if we could just get ahead of some of these, of a potential incident like this, that.
So well said. We want to not to have to use those things.
Exactly.
You know, and we need to get better about being clear with students about what, see something, say something. What, what if? something, say something, what it, what it means.
Yep.
You know, what does it, what does it look like?
Yeah. And for parents to pay more attention to what their kids are doing and others who are interacting with the kids in, in these ways to pay more attention and just say, oh, he's not, he's not really serious or she's not really serious, but just, you know, it can be followed up on.
That's right. Let someone else decide that, but if we don't know about it, we can't put that in the expert's hands to explore that. So, you know, speak up, you know?
You know, it's, it's, speaking up and, and looking at this, but, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, the mental health of children and we are trying to teach social emotional learning about empathy, about not responding to everything in a snap judgment way, in a detrimental way, that feelings are, you know, it's, it's okay to feel this way, but we don't have to act on every feeling. And this, this online article that was published after this last unfortunate incident, they interviewed a mom who lost her child at Sandy Hook. So let's be frank here. If there could be one person that you relied on as an expert as to what could we do differently? I'd say that parent is the expert. And what that parent said over and over again in this interview is we need more social emotional learning. This is what social emotional learning is and we need to teach it more. We, anybody trying to cut it down, you're risking our kids and you're risking all of them. We need our teachers to be able to go into a classroom and say, you know what? I understand you got mad because somebody pulled that ball out of your hand, but you don't just shove that kid. We, we talk about it. It's okay that you're mad that he took that out of your hand, yeah, but you, there's other ways to deal with it. It starts young and we teach it all the way through because we hope this, somebody doesn't get mad at their grandmother, shoot their grandmother and then go on to a rampage to a school, because that's what happened this last time. And if we teach them from the beginning how to control their emotions and how to communicate when there is a, a valid problem better, then we might have few, fewer of these horrific things to be dealing with after the fact. And I'm going to take my cue from the person who lived through it versus somebody's opinion on what social emotional learning really is.
It's definitely multifaceted. There's not one thing.
Precisely.
Many different things that we need to be working on.
I, I think if it would give any of our parents at home a little bit of peace of mind, Felicia, when all of that happened at school, from this phone, from the time of the phone call to the time law enforcement showed up, how long was that? This last time, this recent parking lot issue?
Parking lot? Um, minutes. Maybe 10 minutes?
So it was 10 minutes? So from the time the call went in to the time that somebody was showing up was, you'd say 10 minutes or less?
Yeah, 10 minutes or less.
So there's not a 40, so, so just so everybody knows, we're not 40 minutes away from law enforcement being on the scene for something. We're, we have law enforcement right here in this building. We're less than a mile from three of our schools. That alone, that proximity makes us so much less of a soft target than other places. We are very fortunate in that. And if that gives anybody at home a peace of mind to know, we are, and, and that wasn't an accident. The city did plan this this way. And hopefully that gives you one bit to hold on to, to give you some peace of mind to know, they're that quick, they're that, they're that close.
Actually, I probably would say it was five minutes. It just seems like it was longer.
Adrenaline.
Yeah.
Right. So you'd say five minutes or less?
Yeah, I would probably say about five minutes, right around that time. It just seems like it's longer than...
Right.
Yeah, adrenaline. Adrenaline makes everything feel like forever.
Sure. To bring this piece together, I did have some communications from community members. I, I appreciate very much, you know, a few phone calls, you know, a letter, but just concerned community members, not necessarily even with students in school, but just saying, we're here and if you need assistance, if there's anything we can do, reach out and we're here. Do you need, you know, some additional adults, you know, outside and around? You need, you know, what do you need and how can we help? And that's most appreciated and maybe we need some crossing guard help, so.
I know. We do. That's the thing to volunteer for.
It didn't surprise me to hear from some people.
Although anyone who's seen the crossing guard duties at the end of the day probably wouldn't volunteer.
All right, I'm going to move us along just because it's getting late. Next on the agenda, we have item five, appointment of delegates to the Maine School Board Association Delegate Assembly.
Yes. I have my document right here.
Okay.
Sorry.
Take your time.
I did have it in my place. The amazing Teresa Austin, make sure I have everything. And sometimes I just mess up the folder and then can't find what she so perfectly put where it was supposed to be for me. Ah, there it is. I remember where she put it. Never fails. So the local delegate, delegate to the MSBA Annual Assembly, again, this is part of the Constitution of the Maine School Boards Association and it provides that each active regular board member is entitled to elect a voting delegate to participate in the association's annual delegate assembly. And so the, this year's delegate assembly is scheduled virtually for 9:30 AM on Saturday, October 22nd. So each district generally elects a delegate and then I will send in that name. It's usually done at the, you know, the June meeting. And so if you are interested or willing, we would love to have someone do that piece. The articles that would be voted on would be sent to you ahead for your consideration if there are any things we need to bring for the board first for input so that the delegate is aware of the board's input on those matters. That person would do that as well.
And do we need to elect a delegate?
And an alternate.
And an alternate, right?
Yes, ideally.
And it's interesting, I didn't realize it was going to be on Saturday and it was going to be virtual.
I didn't realize that, that either because it's usually part of the fall conference, correct?
Right. Which has been virtual the last two years, obviously. This year, it's going to be at the Augusta Civic Center like it always has been.
What?
So, but it's interesting that the delegate assembly will take place the day after the two-day conference, which is actually kind of good because if, you know, the downside of being a delegate is that you miss out on clinics that are being offered and you, you know? And usually the, it goes on long enough that you're going to miss two sessions, clinics, so.
Or more.
Or more, possibly more. Kelly missed a lot.
I suspect that is the nature of the change.
It could be, yeah.
And, and I was, I was, I was the delegate last year and I only giggle because I did attend, but I can't remember much of it because I had just had surgery and I had COVID. So, so it was virtual, but I really don't like, I don't remember much of this process, so.
It is a very interesting process. And if anyone here hasn't been part of it, I would definitely encourage you to volunteer. Have you done it yet?
I've not done it yet.
You have? Would you like to?
I'll do it.
Wonderful. Thank you. I've got my calendar. It's the last, Saturday before.
It's Saturday, the 22nd.
22nd?
It's Saturday that, oh, you have the 22nd? So it's a, because this is Saturday before the conference then?
Correct. Yes.
Because the conference is the 27th, the 28th, Thursday and Friday.
Saturday before. Okay. And Tara, don't you want to be the alternate?
Yes.
I would.
But she asked.
I won't be running again.
Don't do better.
Yeah, but that's October. You won't be out by then yet.
That wouldn't make my sense.
Paul, were you speaking up? Were you going to volunteer to be the alternate?
I was going to encourage Tara to do it, but, but if she won't, I'll, I'll be happy to do it.
You want to, are you sure?
The alternate, yeah.
Okay.
He's like, don't make me do it fully.
Wonderful.
I haven't done it in a couple of years. I've been, been a delegate, so my time's coming up.
Almost your turn.
Not virtual, but...
Not virtually. We could, we could make you one.
I'll make you one.
We could make you one.
Okay.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you, Abby and Paul.
Thank you very much.
All right, and let's see. Item six, consideration of authorization to transfer funds.
Yes. So some year, you, you may or may not be familiar with this. Some years we have cost center transfers, other years we do not. All, we are never authorized to over expend our budget and obviously we're not going to over expend our budget. You can't do that. That would be bad to have a budget in the red. So, but there are cost centers occasionally that will run over. The needs were greater than what was budgeted. And then there are cost centers that have a balance. And so over a certain percent, you have to make an actual transfer. And so we ask the board for authorization to do that annually. And then, once we get closer to closing out our books and knowing exactly what those numbers are, I'll report that final information to you. But essentially this is what that authorization is. And I think I gave you my copy. Sorry about that.
Do you want this back?
Thank you very much. Yes. So, I, oh, yes, I'm ready for the motion. I just wanted, yes. If it exceeds 5% is the amount that you need to authorize us to make a transfer. So anything under 5%, we don't make, make these transfers. So.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can have a motion on that.
Yes. Make a motion to conditionally authorize a transfer amounts not exceeding 5% of total appropriation for any school budget cost center to another cost center or among other cost centers for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year, provided that transfers shall not be permitted to increase the total authorized school budget pursuant to 2020 A MRS 14854.
It's like an eye exam.
I know.
That I'm failing.
Yes. You, you're, you're good. You're good. This is why, this is why I was written down beforehand. I will second that.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
All those in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to item K, calendar and announcements. We have graduation tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at DeLuise Stadium. Monday, the 13th, we have adult education graduation from 2 to 7 at The Park. We have eighth grade graduation at EEMS that same night at 5 o'clock. The last day of school, which is a half a day, is Wednesday.
And that's an 11:30 dismissal?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then our next meeting is a workshop meeting on June 21st at 6 o'clock.
June 21st, okay.
Yep. Do I have that right?
I believe you do.
Okay. All right. Brings us to L.
Can I make an announcement? Well, the next school board meeting is July 12th. And it's listed at council chambers right here, but I believe it's going to be moved.
Okay.
And that, that brings me to my announcement because I just want to remind everyone that next week is election day, June 14th. And normally the school budget referendum would be on that date. However, it got bumped to a later date, that being July 12th.
So you should all come to the council.
And that's, the only thing on that election, that municipal election on July 12th will be the school budget.
Yes.
So I encourage all citizens to go to the polls that day to vote on that issue. And that means the polling places include this room, so our meeting will probably typically be moved somewhere else. Usually we do it at EEMS, but that's up to, that's up to you.
Wherever the setup is easiest for, for IT, I imagine it'll probably be the library.
Yeah.
That would be good.
So watch for announcements for that. And, and FYI, I ran into, on the way here tonight, I ran into a 2019 graduate of Ellsworth High School, Carter Frank, who informed me that he had just cast his absentee ballot for the school budget. So those, those absentee ballots are available now and early voting, I believe, is available now. So you can pick them up. You can do that right here at City Hall. If you don't think you'll be able to vote on July 12th or it's inconvenient or whatever, you can vote well beforehand if you want.
Thank you for that reminder, Paul. Because if you had voted prior absentee, which some people had, you need to do it again.
Right.
That ballot does not count, so.
Right.
Thank you.
We appreciate you taking time to do that.
Yeah. Okay. Now you can go to...
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right.
Item L.
Item L, adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn.
Having no further business, I move that we adjourn the board meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?